Good evening, everyone. You can go ahead and call a meeting to order at this time. Please turn all electronic devices, phones off or on vibrate at this time. And Ms. Joely, would you please lead us in our order and put this evening back? I think you can.
Joe, we come to you today asking that you guide us in the decisions that we make for our city. We ask that you be with those that are protecting our country, be with our leaders that they may make the right decisions for this country. And these things we ask. Thank you.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the heavens, with the liberty and justice of God.
Thank you very much. All right. Consider approval of the minutes of the June 6th, 2016 meeting. Give that time to review. We have a call.
We made the motion that we approve the minutes from the June 16th. June 6th, 2016 meeting with corrections as noted.
Have a second?
Second.
I'll pay or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anybody here that's not on the regular agenda? You all? But you or just one of you?
No, they're all present.
They're all present? All? Don't you? You're not?
I'm not.
Okay.
I just have a couple of general questions and then want to post something. So I was curious on the current water issue. What has caused that issue? Has it changed over? Did we change our source of water? Where are we pulling our water from now?
We can... I want to address that in my report. I can maybe bring you into the question now if you'd like, or if you want to wait until my report, I can address that issue because that's going to be one of the specific things we're going to talk about.
Okay, yeah. If you're covering it, that's...
You're talking about the current boil water notice?
Boil water notice and where our water currently comes from and what other options we have for water supply, general.
Okay. How do you handle it? What does it do in the report? What else?
And then the other thing that I wanted to look at was I want to propose a cleanup day for Ballenger to where if we could take possibly volunteers to help anybody that is handicapped elderly or whatever, possibly with their yards, but also to see if we can't do something between volunteers and possibly city equipment in combination to make it easier for people to get some of the debris and things out of their yards. For instance, I have a 10-yard dump trailer that I would be more than willing to volunteer to drive to people's houses as long as they had somebody there to help load stuff up and get it to their recycling center, things like that. If we could possibly look at running the brush truck some additional time on that given day or something and try to push people to get additional brush cleanup, to get the junk out of their yards, to just try to beautify Ballenger a little bit.
Okay. We have done something, I believe in the past, where we've had a cleanup day or something like that, but the one thing that we have to be careful of is sometimes people put things in there that don't need to be in there and then we end up with issues there.
Right.
The brush truck is supposed to be part of the report, it might as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So something we can look at for sure.
Okay.
What else you got?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. And you are?
Chad Hardy.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments? No? We're good. I know, I would say that gets you all covered. Thank you, sir. All right. Discuss and take action on a contract with Rose County for joint collection services for the November ballot. You should have a copy of that in your... This is the same agreement that we've had in the past with Rose County. You'll save the taxpayers by combining as well and post on elections, I'm sorry.
It's the same one with them in the past?
Yes, it's exactly the same one in the past, yes, sir.
Okay. This date is November the 8th.
It's...
Is that their update?
I don't... It should be the first Tuesday. I don't know, you're right, it's November the 8th. First Tuesday where it's not the first. The first Tuesday after the first.
November the 8th.
Yes.
Okay. Just kidding.
Yes.
Make the motion that we approve the contract with Rose County for joint election services.
Second?
Second.
I'll pay or say aye.
Thank you.
All right. Discuss and take action to consider the condemnation of the following properties. A is Portencia Perez, 305 Hutchins Avenue, Lot 3, Block 22, Original Edition. And B, Portencia Perez, 301 Hutchins Avenue, Lot 1, 2, Block 22, Original Edition. You should all agree with that. Jessica, go ahead.
This one...
I just maybe wanted to know...
She wants to talk to you about that one, too.
Okay.
I just maybe wanted to know what the options were for these properties at this time, you know? I was told that they were in a flood zone and that we couldn't add or improve to them. Is that correct?
To a certain... I think there's a value cap that we don't set.
FEMA sets that.
FEMA sets that. We don't have any part of that, but I think there is a certain amount of money up to the value of the house you can only put into the house. It's half...
Yeah.
Fifty percent of the taxable value.
Fifty percent of the taxable value is what FEMA lets you...
Okay. And if they are condemned, I guess I just want to know what your process is in that.
You want to speak further?
Well, if they're condemned, of course, y'all would have the option to tear them down yourself, you know, and clean up the lots or have someone to do it for you. The city, we do tear them down and clean the lots, you know? So, you know, we have about three options.
And what's the timeframe?
For condemnation? Typically, you have six months to respond to condemnation letter.
Okay.
And then you can file the condemnation. You have to get an attorney. You can file the condemnation and then at some point it'll go to court. Depends on how far you want to take it and how far the city wants to take it.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know what the process was in all of it. I wanted to consider what all my options are.
Sure. I would advise you to seek legal counsel to get what all your options are if that's...
Okay.
If that's what you'd like to do.
Oh, and if the city does tear them down, I think it has to give a cost amount?
Well, you know, it varies. I'll ask...
We can work with you to tear those houses down.
So we could make out payments?
We could do something along those lines, yes. I mean, we can... We'll have to assess a fee for... We've got a fee set up kind of for the consumer going to use the backhoe and the dozer.
Yeah, for the equipment and the people, you know? If we wait that long, yeah, we probably do with a building and find out.
Yeah.
And there are some bees in on one side of the house?
Some white?
Bees?
Bees?
Bee hive there.
Yeah.
And it's an area that he and I usually don't clean just because of the bees we clean all around, but not in that area.
Okay.
Just so we all are aware of it.
Okay.
I don't think... I think they're just honeybees.
Okay.
Because we wear it.
I understand that you can still... From an attorney, do you have an idea of what you're looking at doing? I mean, do you... I know you're looking at options, but...
I'm more considering taking the houses down.
Okay.
And then, if possible, just selling the land.
Okay. Okay.
Can we have a last question at this point? I'm just trying to understand the issue. I'm just curious, why are they being looked at to be condemned?
We have pictures.
We have to tear it.
That's all I needed to know. I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's the only thing. Yeah, other than something like that.
They've got one minute to tear it, actually.
I was just wanting to know the issue that was being...
Corey, would you scope this? Do you have the picture?
No, I don't need to see any of your hair. I just wanted to know what the issue was. Thank you. Yes, sir. I mean, that's why people get onto us, for beautifying Ballenger because we leave all these... I just...
Well, I just...
I just wasn't sure if that was the issue because the flood zone had been mentioned and I didn't know if it was something involved with that or if it was just because of construction. I'm just trying to understand. Thank you.
I wish there was a FEMA office here we could send people to.
Yes.
So they're getting rid of those and we don't...
Now, there's one other thing I don't understand. If it's a flood zone, why would they allow a commercial building in a flood zone?
What are you talking about?
Say, if I wanted to build a commercial business there, why would that be allowed?
You can build in the flood zone. You can construct in a new flood zone. Your... Whoever you finance, assuming you finance it, is going to require you to carry flood insurance inside of the flood zone. For example, when Golden Chick came in, the misconception was the city required them to build that up 60 feet or 60 inches above grade. That was actually a requirement of FEMA. Their insurance, their flood insurance, required them to do that. And I think their flood insurance is around, I want to say, $50,000 a year on that. So you can build in the flood zone, it's just incredibly expensive to do that.
Yeah, you have to go through an engineer and our surveying process and they'll tell you how far, how high you have to build up.
Build up?
Yeah.
I guess that was the part that I didn't quite understand is what, why you could not build another residential home, but you could?
You could, it's just going to be incredibly expensive to do it.
Okay. Okay.
We don't set the flood zone, we don't set the price. It's all done through the government.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving along. Discuss and take action to consider a request for donation property located at 700...
I will take the action.
I'm sorry, my fault, my fault, my fault. Right.
Make a motion, we can deal with the properties at 305 Hutchins Avenue, Lot 3, Block 22, Original Edition, and 301 Hutchins Avenue, Lot 1, 2, Block 22, Original Edition.
Second?
Repeat that, please.
No.
That's second.
I'll pay or say aye.
Aye.
My apologies, thank you. All right. Now moving along to discuss and take action to consider a request for donation property located at 700 Broad Avenue. And you should have a picture of that property as well.
We got the yard, man?
Yes. We built the yard. The city built the yard.
You didn't have that.
Yes, and we spent quite a bit of money going initially. I believe they want to give this property to us. It's adjacent to Broad and Seventh, right on the corner. It's kind of behind the head of this church. Is it right across the street from McMillken? Yeah.
Catting corner.
Catting corner from McMillken, yeah. At this time, I don't know what we would exactly do with it. I don't think the city of Ballenger should be in the business of real estate. I can't think of a specific purpose that we would use this for, Steve.
So they don't want to try to sell it, they just rather donate it to the city?
That's my understanding.
It's, I think what happened is the grandfather owned it, he passed away and didn't have a will, so it goes down to the son and the son passed away and he doesn't have a will, so I think it's actually a niece that is under her right now, but it's still in limbo pretty much. Well, it'll be just as hard to sell as it is to donate to us legally. I mean, they still have to go through...
Yeah.
Somebody needs the council, like, just to go through the motions and sell it. I mean, that's the best thing.
I'm just... My advice would be to find a real estate agent and sell it because I can't see the reason the city would take it.
Well, we'd like to have it turned down.
Yeah. So we can make it to mayor's house. I would advise against it at this time.
I agree.
Do you want to take action on that or do you just want to let it sit there?
I don't think we need to. I just take action or consider it and I don't think we need to consider it. I think we say no.
I agree.
Motion to decline the offer of the property at 700 Broad.
I make a motion that we decline offer of donation of property at 700 Broad Avenue.
Second? I'll pay or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Discuss and take action on internet providers for the city. You should have a list as well.
Corey, did you give everybody one of these? Okay. You should have in front of you the list of all the providers per request of council two weeks ago. We started researching this. I will say, despite, you know, the water, the streets, internet is probably a strong third for issues that we get calls on. You can see the chatter on social media about it and I agree as a guy who's been here for two years that the social media here is... Or not social media, as you know. The internet here is slow. We've tried a number of providers here at City Hall. I personally have tried a number of providers at my house and I think there were similar stories. So we researched internet providers for Ballenger. Frontier, Rise Broadband, VGI, Vibe, and West Central. Corey did the lab work, City Hall, the companies. Tuo, Frontier, and Vibe said they would get back with me as soon as possible. I guess as soon as possible is not within 10 days. We'll joke with Joely. But you can see there are various prices and fees and whatnot. We would be willing to help or assist any internet company that needs a tower, a repeater or a water tower. We could take care of that. If they need some sort of rotting way to put in lines, I'm pretty sure we could accommodate them for that. But so far, no company has approached us with any requests.
The state doesn't entertain anything.
No.
There's nobody at the state to talk to.
No.
Am I able to address this issue?
Sure.
I have additional information on some of those. Are y'all familiar with what happened, why Frontier took over for Verizon and what Verizon didn't do to... There's actually supposed to be fiber optics laid in Ballenger by Verizon.
There is.
Now, that... Well, they didn't lay the corridor to Ballenger that they were supposed to have laid. So it was actually... They were forced to pull out based on the fraudulent documents that they turned in to the state of Texas. So I just want to make sure that Joe are aware of that. And then Rise Broadband is currently being investigated by the FCC for their lack of service to Ballenger because I'm actually dealing with their corporate office right now on that. But they haven't been providing what they say they provide for over six months. So just additional information on those that...
The way... You know, I'm... Thank you for that information. The way it works out here is back in the good old days when Randy was a young man, Ma Bell came out and you had Verizon that had the telecommunications, CCMs, specifically a convenience accessory. That fractured into telecommunications as well as cable, which is what Vibe has a CCM. With the popularity of Dish Direct, some of the satellite providers, you saw fewer and fewer cable subscriptions. We see that at City Hall, by the way, on our franchise ads. And you're actually right about the Verizon and the Frontier transition. What we're seeing is Frontier and Vibe already have infrastructure in town and they have the CCM. So we can't go out and try to attract AT&amp;T to come in and compete with either one of these groups. I know because I asked.
And even... Sorry. Because they are no longer selling new service, you still... They still have that right because Verizon and Vibe or neither one of them will sell their service in this area.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. West Central is another option. It's, to give you kind of a, in layman's terms, it's more of a repeater, is that correct, Corey? It's more just 100% wireless.
Yeah, they've got some that put the antennas on top and some have the antenna where...
Yeah.
It just depends on where you're at in town.
West Central's going to be... It works a lot like your cellphone. And typically, if you get too many calls, too many people on one tower, your cellphone's going to shut down or it will go slow. Same thing here. West Central was popular about a year ago when everybody migrated to West Central and now they cannot carry that earth. Anytime something pops up that sounds good, people go to it and... To answer the question for council, really, I haven't been asked anything of anybody as to what we could do.
I think for some, because infrastructure is important to have the better internet. I mean, that's not the only thing we have to do, but I mean, that definitely exists.
Anything and everything we can do to get reliable, high-speed internet here, I think we need to do as a city. If and when that comes, I will bring this up to you guys and report back, but so far it's, don't call us, we'll call you. There's really no action to take on number eight.
Any other questions? Nobody, sir? Right.
You need to handle it?
This is discussing action.
You want to table? Sure.
I just don't know if we need...
I would... In fact, I would recommend that we table it and then mark it. That way, if something does come up, we can just bring it back from the table.
Okay, make a motion to table. Discuss and take action on that.
Second?
Second.
I'll pay or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, consider approval of building permit.
I don't want to have it.
Unless y'all... See, I thought y'all had some...
I have one. It's taken in my book.
You did?
Yeah, it's stuck in my book.
Oh, okay. Y'all need to draw on two more.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Discuss and take... Discuss and consider the meeting dates for July council meetings.
As you know, July 4th is a holiday and I'm assuming that we will not be meeting the night until July the 4th. We could meet on the 5th if you prefer. I am going on vacation the 7th through the 14th. That leaves the 18th as the next council meeting. I'd like to know what y'all's pleasure is. If y'all want to be on July the 4th, I'm all game for that, too.
Do we need to meet? Wait, just until the 18th?
Do we need to is a... I mean, I guess we... If y'all want to just skip everything to the 18th, we can do. I can tell you this much, on July the 4th, we'll have a financial statement ready for you, but we won't have a package to you until after 5:00 p.m. of the 1st. We can't run financials until the end of the day. Actually, no, we could. We could. Right, we can run on the 30th, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can do the 5th or we can do the 18th, Charles. Or we can do both. Y'all just tell me.
We might just need to do both in case something comes up between now and the end of the day.
Well, we can schedule the 18th for certain. You want to do the 5th just to be... You'll move the 4th to the 5th for the holiday?
I can't hear him. Keep him on the 4th.
The 5th?
Yeah.
Well, let's just say the 5th and the 18th, continue with the 5th if something... If we don't have a heavy load, then we wait the 5th and go to the 18th. You okay with that, John?
That's fine.
Okay. So we'll just move the meeting on the 4th to the 5th. That work? Yeah. Also, keep in mind that we're going to have the same issue in September for Labor Day as well.
I don't do that, sir.
Move it.
We'll do it on Labor Day?
No, I said we'll deal with...
Oh, yeah. For walking up?
For walking. All right. You want a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we move the meeting dates from July 1st to July 5th and 18th.
Second?
Second.
I'll pay or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Get the city administered by a weekly report fee.
Okay, let me write that note real quick. Okay. We'll get a couple of Mr. Partey's questions out of the way, first of all. Our water supply, as it stands today, comes from two different sources, Lake OHI and Lake Ballenger. And up until about a month ago, it was primarily OHI almost exclusively. We have now since got significant rainfall. I'll rain and speak to that in a moment. We get roughly 70 to 80% of our water from IVE and 20 to 30% from Lake Ballenger. It's not a set in stone ratio, but that's pretty much the common average, correct?
Yeah. Unless Lake affects a lot of water where I mean...
Yeah. Rain will speak to the issues that we have, the options that we have as an alternative is something that this body has deliberated on for five years at least. We have looked at everything from groundwater that was 70 times saltier than seawater to a well that was going to produce 100,000 gallons of water a day, which is probably one-tenth of what we need, to water that came out of an aquifer south of here that came out of the ground at 150 degrees.
Yeah, 150 or 180.
And it had, was it nuclear?
Radiodubliad.
Yeah, radiodubliads. We have tried to get well water out of Coquimie. The well was located less than 50 feet from the Colorado River and the owner claimed it wasn't influenced by the river. In the five years of looking, the council did not find any acceptable and suitable, is that probably a good word? Alternatives for water. About two years ago, nearly two years ago, we began negotiations with the city of Clyde to get the senior water rights off of Lake Fort Phantom. It would be 1,250 acre feet that we would purchase that would deliver 1.2 million gallons of water a day to the city of Ballenger. Right now, we're using, because it's summertime, we're probably using 600,000 to 700,000. In the wintertime, we use as little as 380,000, 350,000. Those are really our options. There's not a whole... There's not a whole lot out there. No one's really willing to sell surface water. Uh, our groundwater issue is we're just in the middle of a groundwater desert, for lack of a better term, and, uh, it's, it's very problematic. Uh, as far as your cleanup day issue, um...
Quick question, the boiling water issue?
Uh, we have to go into the rest of all that here in a second. I'm just, I'm hoping to put you on the hot seat, Mr. Everett.
Hey, I've been there before.
Uh, our, the cleanup day is something that, um, I have done in two other cities. I think we tried to do one here in September, did one. Um, typically you want them in the spring and the fall, when it's a little bit cooler. Any participation from you or another private citizen or group, we will certainly encourage and work with. Um, the mayor is correct, uh, you will get a lot of, uh, debris that we cannot take away, mainly tires, uh, mainly anything with asbestos in it, um, paint, paints. Yes, there's a, there's a bunch...
Is there a hazardous, uh, materials place that we can pay to, like the San Angelo drop-off that we can negotiate something or?
Republic and, and San Angelo has some things as far as negotiating across with those guys. Um, no one's been successful in doing that. Um, it is, tires, I can speak to tires specifically, uh, they are incredibly expensive. Um, batteries, anything with lead and asbestos, uh, it's, and, and the way it works is, uh, if they're gonna put something in there, they're gonna put it in the bottom and we won't know about it till it's already in there. When they go take it out, all of a sudden we get this bill for tires or, you know, whatever.
Correct.
Um, and it's kinda, you know, it's one of those things where it's kinda, everybody's going home and we get the bill thirty days later and what happened here?
Right.
Um, anything that we can do to help with that, I think we should. I think that, uh, we could provide some city equipment on a limited basis, um, but it would take some coordination with whomever wants to organize it within our public works department. Uh, the brush truck, I'm gonna bring that up. We, um, have sent the invoice off to Amarillo. There'll be a slack time until they can get the truck ready and delivered to Ballinger. And so, we will, we just, they offered out the purchase of a brush truck two weeks ago. Uh, just for the record, and everybody watching on YouTube, the truck is approximately thirty, forty years old.
Oh, how long about now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good third.
Thirty, forty, you know, once you, once you hit thirty, it all goes down anyway. Um, to completely fix the truck up was gonna cost around eighty thousand dollars. We purchased a new one for a hundred and twenty-two. Um, and we hope to have that in circulation in the next couple of months. Okay, um, is that all your questions, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, a couple things before I let Randy steal the show. Um, as noted, I am going on vacation. I will be leaving, uh, the evening of the 6th. I will be back very, very, very late on the 13th. I will be in Charleston, South Carolina, um, with my wife on our fifteenth wedding anniversary. I gotta go.
No interruptions.
Only if you call. Um, I trust everybody here will, Steve and Randy and Clyde, maybe not Clyde, Steve and Randy for sure, um, Scotty, um, they can take care of things, uh, for a couple of days. One other thing I wanna comment about, um, uh, is the pool. Janet Wilson has done an exceptional job of running that pool. Um, there is a video, um, on Facebook, I don't know how they did it, but somebody took their phone underwater and it is very, very clear. You can, she's on one end, whoever's filming is on one end where the slides are and you can see the kids jumping into the water from the diving board. Um, you can see the color of their bathing suits. Um, the pool is running phenomenally. Um, we also have our celebration in the park on the 25th to celebrate Ballinger's one hundred and thirty year anniversary or birthday. Um, Saturday, um, we have thrown everything, the kitchen sink, to get the putt-putt up in working order. Um, it was in massive disrepair, uh, more than I anticipated. Um, we've replaced two BI's, we're replacing PVC, so the golf ball, when you hit it in the hole, it shoots out over here. Um, we're trying to get, just to make it operational and functional. Um, we've got a snow cone machine over there for it that was removed, um, from the building. Um, we're looking for a window unit, um, for it, um, but we're hopefully to get that thing up and running. Uh, I was told by staff that we'll have it up and running by Friday. Corey did a test drive on the putt-putt course.
It was rough. Your game or the actual... This one makes your...
Um, it, it was, uh, it was tough sled. Um, I'll be honest with you. I just wanna have a hard time charging the people to, to use that facility. In fact, I probably just wanna start paying people to use that facility. Uh, but, uh, Claude and, and Pickle are doing a good job down there. So, anything else before we, we kick it to Randy? Okay, as y'all know, um, and as I told you on Saturday, uh, we are still under a boil water notice. Um, Randy had contacted me, uh, beginning on Thursday, we're gonna go into detail on this. Um, we were fighting the fight all through Friday and on Saturday morning at approximately seven-thirty, uh, got a phone call and I knew it wasn't gonna be good. And, uh, I walked out and I don't think Randy had slept in seventy-two hours. Um, he, he was so much out of it, he was cheering for the Astros. Which, you know, Randy is pretty bad. So, anyway, Randy, you wanna take it from Thursday about four o'clock to where we are today?
Yeah, well, I'll wrap it up a little. It all actually started probably on Monday, the 6th of June. Jason and I went to the lake. As y'all know, we've been catching water. We've let water out of the old lake and the rains brought water in and if you were out there six months ago, you noticed it looked like a forest, uh, nothing but salt cedars and willows and weeds and very little water. Anyway, all that went underwater. So, we were out there Monday, the 6th and the lake looked pretty good because we knew it was fixing to get upset because we've been through this before. In '05, it was worse than it is this year. Uh, we went back out there on the 7th and the water was as black as black can be. You could smell it from the gate. So, we knew the manganese problem had hit. So, we began to, you know, take manganese samples daily, trying to keep an eye on it. The limit on manganese is point zero five parts per minute, which isn't much. And what that does, it causes tasting odor problems, but it also causes turbidity problems. It eats up your chlorine, uh, you don't have any chlorine residual. So, by Tuesday of the following week, the manganese level in the Ballinger lake was a six point two. And we're talking bad. Uh, Ivi was a point three, which we can handle that, there's no problem with that. But the problem was, people started using water, we can't keep up with demand with just Ivi water, we have to use Ballinger water. So, on Thursday, we probably pumped four hundred thousand gallons of Ballinger water and probably six hundred thousand of Ivi water. But when that Ballinger water hit, we weren't able to treat that manganese, we just didn't have enough chemical to treat it. Uh, about four o'clock that afternoon, the turbidity spiked. When you get a spike in turbidity, the state says when it reaches a one point oh, you'll issue a boil water notice. That's what happened. Uh, by Saturday morning, we had it back in limits. There wasn't any, there wasn't a problem by ten, eleven o'clock. Uh, but it's still higher than we like it, but we're in limits. Uh, tomorrow, we'll probably be taking back tea samples and once those back tea samples come back clear, uh, then we can let the boil water notice.
How long, um, how long does this manganese disruption last typically?
Typically, you're looking at all summer.
Really?
Because that stuff just sits there and cooks. And then, I don't wanna get technical with it, but then you get into the problem when you get lake turnover, where you've got all this cold water down here at the bottom of the lake right now and all the hot water's up there at the top. Well, when they flip, all that cold water's gonna bring all that junk to the top of it.
Yeah.
So, here we go again.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it's just mother nature will take care of most of it.
Right.
But, uh, we've got chemical doses of it now high enough, which is ungovernable. And I, we've had two engineers, uh, and two process control people either at the plant or we've been in contact with and they just cannot believe manganese problems that high. Our chemical guy that comes out of Bridgeport, uh, the highest heat's in it is a five. And we've got that top. You, you can't imagine the smell. So, people in town just be thankful, we're keeping the smell at hand. Now, they're gonna have some brown water and that brown water's gonna turn to a yellowish color when you start getting it out of the system and then you'll get back to it clear. But it's, we're not the only town in the state of Texas, everybody that their lake is filled with, they've got the same problem.
It's because of all that growth and the salt cedars and the mesquites and whatever else has been grown there.
And when all that goes underwater and it gets hot, it's just like setting on a stove and cooking. So, but in 2005, we went through the same thing. It's, it's a normal process.
Is that the last time the lake was as full as it is today?
The last time it was full was in '05, it was in eight years. And we've probably been since twenty, uh, twenty-four, the low like it's been, so that would be...
What percentage is it now?
Uh, it's over sixty-seven percent. We're three feet, three point seven feet low.
Oh, wow.
So, and then the old lake is full.
Is it still, is it balanced all on?
Yeah, and we're still letting water out of the old lake.
How much would, go ahead.
Uh, up until last week, we were probably gaining two tenths of a foot a day. It's now slowed down to about tenth of a foot because the water's spreading out more and it doesn't come up as quick. We're gonna take water out.
Yeah, we can't forget though, we've got water.
Hey, y'all, y'all can quit praying now.
No, it's bad. As bad as manganese is, unless we have water.
Yeah, well, if you've ever smelled rotten eggs, well, this is ten times worse. It'll, it'll take the hair out of your nose.
I'll happily take any sample out here.
Well, you can ask Brian, I'll let him take a whip out of it.
Well, let's be clear, he didn't let me take that.
He just smelled this and he...
Jason, Jason opened the jar, hands it to Randy and I'm sitting a good three feet away and I could smell it. And if you've ever smelled rotten eggs, and I mean rotten eggs on a hot day, that's what that meant. And I said, what is that? He goes, that's the water coming out of Lake Ballinger.
And as one engineer said, that is non-travable water. So, we're doing the best way that we can.
We did have, uh, we did have a couple of firms come out. One was here only Saturday, uh, one was here today.
And they basically said, you're done. We're good.
We, we're... Were you residuals or good going through town?
Everything is in compliance right now, we're good, but we've gotta take those back tea samples. But we're trying to get the system flush out right now.
Is, is it a matter of getting the old water, the bad, the cold bad water?
Bad water out, good water in. I know at my house, of course, I'm close to the plant, uh, for two days I had brownish water, yellowish water, and today my water was clear.
I'm on the other end.
You're on the other end.
I'm getting brownish and yellow, um, but I'm, you know, it's gonna clear out.
That's what is on there.
Yeah, we're literally getting it flushed.
Yeah, that's why you see the hydrants running.
Running.
Uh, so we can, um...
Nobody's setting on a can, do it.
Oh, yeah.
There be, and we gotta get it through.
Um, over to the hydrants, remind me of one other thing. Um, talked to Scotty, they did a test run with the new chip sprayer, uh, today. And so, um, on Monday morning, we're gonna order one transport and we will begin 11th Street on the 27th of June.
They'll say woo.
Well, no, they'll, they'll be complaining because we're gonna have to shut it down for a while, too.
No, it's the after.
Um, so, anyway, we will begin that process. We had to get a transportable and, uh, we will spend just under, uh, two hundred thousand dollars approximately seven days.
Is that what it says? All right, there you go.
That is all I have. Did you have anything else, Randy?
No, I just wanted to assure everybody, pretty much having care of it.
I appreciate you, Randy, you wanna work out for me?
While we knew it was coming, we just didn't know, wanted to win.
And I did wanna say, um, to, I guess to Paul, I don't know what Phillip just said. Um, these guys haven't been sitting on their can. Uh, they were a man short, uh, to start off with. Uh, one just happened to schedule a vacation that week and that was great timing on his part.
Yeah.
Um, so they're out there doing everything they can. Um, on Thursday, I know for sure he worked a full, he, Steve and Jason, y'all worked a full day, went home at ten o'clock that night.
Came back at...
Came back at two, left at five, was back at the plant at six-thirty, six-thirty-seven. Um, and then worked a full day Friday.
Went home at ten, Friday night.
And then Saturday morning called me at seven-thirty and they were there till six, seven o'clock Saturday?
I went home at...
You went home to sleep at some point.
I went home at eight Saturday night.
And then you were...
I sent Jason home.
Yeah, yeah, you sent Jason home to sleep.
To sleep. And then I went home at eight and then Steve and I shut it down at nine, nine-thirty.
And then they were back out there yesterday all day. And so, uh, just for everybody listening, these guys are not, they're not playing bridge out there.
If I have to plug them home one more time.
Are, are you getting your work out any?
I'm getting to it all. At Fesen, huh, they're getting canceled.
Get you turd.
Anybody who ever wants a tour of the plant, we can give you one, uh, and we'll let you walk the cones.
Yeah.
We got a week to that, man, I need some time, I don't want to work out for me.
We're here at Lake, or tomorrow.
Somebody was out yesterday at the lake, uh, skiing and playing in Endertou. And I always, Brad Montec gave me a text message one time, so I'll never put another boat in that lake again after seeing all the stuff that's in it. But it was funny because when you go on the top of the Dana River, you go on the backside and you go up and you can see the whole lake. And I see this boat just kinda making this big circle and I've been, you know, I've been to lakes where you get up high and it looks almost with that navy blue that's by design. That thing looked like an old sled. I mean, it was just, it's just black and...
Well, today you have, usually if you get a twenty, twenty-five mile an hour wind and you get flat catch, you wanna get waves up there.
Okay. You go skiing out there, we like skiing on...
Oh, but one, one thing I might add, uh, I look to be in this week or next week, we're adding aeration to the intake structure, which helps a lot with manganese. And if it, if it, we're gonna put it inside the structure, but if it, if it helps, we may add two more units in front of the structure. And that will not only help with manganese, but it will help in the fall when those lakes turn over, it'll help with that, so.
The other thing, just real quick, I'll, and then we'll get to the, to the other stuff, but Randy had told me at one point last week, and I'm assuming it's gonna be, if it's not this time, it'll be true, uh, we're spending roughly a thousand dollars a day on chemicals to treat the water.
To treat the manganese.
So, we got the rain... So, we got the rain, we've been forgetting. No, we got the water to treat, so...
But next time, you know, I won't be here the next time. When somebody says, "We need to spray them saltiers," we need to spray them saltiers.
Okay, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Randy.
All right, thank y'all. All right, here request future agenda items from city council. Anybody have anything else we need to add, please?
Do the basketball gloves for the park, the new ones?
Did you get them, get them ordered? Yes, ma'am. The breakaways?
Yes. And you can break them, right? Okay, be careful.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Were we supposed to put...
The, yes, that was, that was a mistake on my part. I saw the addresses of Hutchings, and I just... That was a mistake on my part, but it's simply to give them off the, the, making that one.
Yeah, okay.
So, and the gentleman that we were supposed to put back on, we didn't?
Yes, ma'am. I, when I saw the agenda and I saw the addresses of Hutchings, I had made the assumption that that was it, but it was actually something completely different. I apologize for that, but we will take care of that one.
What else? There you go? Nope. Moving on, Ballinger City Council should meet the executive session as authorized by Texas government for section 551. Uh, 07, consultation with city planning here update on alternative water resources.